Norma, are you there?
I am.
Okay, we're getting ready to get started, just want to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, I'll go ahead and call to order the reconvene meeting of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners. We originally met on November 3rd. So today, we need to take up a couple of items, I think three items probably to vote on. And these have to do with the Public Transportation Program Grants. The 5310, the 5311, and then we'll have a companion resolution concerning those. I'll recognize Ms. Taylor, who is our Transit Director, to offer any additional comments. Norma?
I think, I think that's, you've stated everything that needs to be stated. I do want to let you know again that if the state does not provide their 5% match, I will be back at a later date to ask the Board's approval to, for that to be a local funding.
Mr. Adams, do you have any comments? I didn't know if you needed to make any, I heard you talking about the resolution, did it need to?
Well, the only thing, the resolution has blanks, so where appropriate, Jackson County needs to be filled in with blanks. And then, the purpose of the resolution is to identify the authorized person to submit the grant. Normal, that's usually the county manager, correct? The authorized person to submit grants?
Yeah.
So then, you would pass the resolution with Jackson County filling with blanks, and then authorizing the county manager to file these grant applications.
All right, so we're going to take these separately. First item will be the 5310 grant application. Do I have a motion that we approve that?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mal.
Yes.
Mr. Lueker.
Hopefully he's here.
Mr. Woody.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes, motion carries. Next is the 5311 grant application, do I have a motion then that we approve it?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. D.
Yes.
Mr. Woody.
Yes.
Mr. Mal.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes, motion carries. And then finally, we have the Grants Resolution. That's in our packet as Resolution R20-25. And as it's been noted in the locations within the resolution where there is a blank that will be submitting Jackson County's name, and the authorizing official be the county manager. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mal.
Yes.
Mr. Woody.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the end of our regular scheduled business for this business portion, unless there's any other business that needs to be entertained. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I moved that way.
All right, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any question or discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call our next meeting to order. This is a work session for the Jackson County Board of Commissioners today, November the 10th, 2020. And I'll recognize our county manager to lead us through the discussion. We have a special guest with us for the first presentation, which is Item 1. Jack Stuckey, is welcome, good to have you here. Mr. Adams, do you want to offer any kind of opening remarks for Mr. Stuckey, takes the floor?
Yeah, we thought, we were talking about that, you do have his presentation in your packets, but it just didn't make its way up on the train.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Stuckey had reached out to me and had requested to basically make contact with this board. Mr. Stuckey is liaison for the Student Government Association with Western Carolina University. And he and I have had several, I believe, good conversations. And I don't want to jump in front of the purpose of what he wants to present to the board, but I think the basic concept is to just make introductions of the Student Government Association and let the board know that they are there, and they're there to work and help this board in whatever need. So having a rundown, I'll push it through.
Thank y'all again, I'm Jack Stuckey, I am the WCUSGA ASG Liaison. So my role is one of the executive board members who serves on the ASG General Assembly. So every month, the UNC system, which consists of 17 universities throughout North Carolina, meet and have conversation on how we can represent students within our individual institutions and learn from others, and how we can push for that representation on the Board of Governors, which is over the whole system through our ASG student president. So that's a little bit of my role within and how and why I'm here. But again, as Mr. Adams was saying, first date, first playdate, whatever we want to call it, just an opportunity for y'all to have a contact with me as a student that you can literally text, call, email, about anything that might come up where there's a request or thought about students at Western Carolina University as we are such a dense population within the county, and a large influx of income within numerous different businesses and retail locations within our county and within our town. So that's about it in a nutshell. Biggest question that I have, because I know how much work y'all do for the county and for our community, is what is the biggest thing that you would like for me to express and share with students on campus to learn and understand that there are people taking care of the county that we call home and drive to and from all over the state and other states to enjoy an awesome education in Western Carolina?
Well, I think, I'll start by just saying, I think it's important for students to know that as far as I'm concerned, when we look at the population who are here in Jackson County, I make no difference between full-time residents, part-time residents, whether that be someone who owns a second home, or a full-time home, or it be a student who's in student housing. They are just as much a part of our community, and while they're in residence here, their concerns, their issues, whatever they're facing is what we need to focus on in addition to somebody who's lived here full-time.
Yeah.
And I hope they understand that.
Yeah, and that's something that I will absolutely love to share with them during our next Senate meeting, because I have the opportunity to sit in and provide updates and share and connect. And biggest thing I've learned too over life is that for people to thrive, they need to know that they matter. And when we tell students and senators and leaders of our campus that, yeah, you matter, there's a whole board that's over this county that is thinking of you and considering you throughout every decision they make. So that just gives them excitement and encouragement to get up and do even more within our campus. So, yeah, but I'll leave the floor open for anybody else to share.
Well, I would like to personally, I'd like you to pass this on as well, Jack, to students. I am so impressed with the number of students that volunteer in Jackson County. Just last week at United Christian Ministries, we had a social work student who came and worked for hours and just did whatever was needed, didn't question, you know, whether it's sweeping up the floor or restocking shelves.
Yes.
And I, last month, I stopped along 107, there were some young ladies picking up trash, which is very dear to our hearts. The Commissioners, we have a task force on litter pickup, and to see how they were working and just doing on their own, picking up trash along there. So I think there's so many positive ways that your student body contributes in very practical, noticeable ways to our community, thank you.
Sure, we appreciate it, thank you.
Jack, share a little bit, Mr. Stuckey.
No, no. Yeah.
Jack, share a little bit about your, the election involvement of the students.
Yeah, so I also serve with the Student Democracy Coalition and the Department for Community Engagement and Service Learning with Director Lane Perry. We do a lot of work to get students at the polls. We have that early voting polling station that was open during the month of October for students to come and vote and share and do. And I can't share the specific details and digits on numbers and everything, but it is impressive how many votes we collect and pour into the county's numbers and the states as well, because I don't know very many students who are going to take the time to get registered, go in their car, go to a polling place they've never been before, especially if they're not from around here, register to be here. And there's a lot of logistics that the Center for Community Engagement, Lane Perry, and Student Democracy Coalition have been kind of bypassing with the voting opportunities on campus. And again, the biggest nonpartisan organization, sharing and expressing that with all students to get involved and share their opinion and voice what they value and want to see within our government nationally. So, that's what it's looked like.
And there was a piece on NPR today that goes just right along with that. They were talking about the fact that of the population, college students, young people, were more adversely affected by barriers created from COVID to voting than any other part of the population because of the inability to have access to transportation.
Exactly.
And being in a remote area where they may not have, know where the poll is. And so I think that is really helpful, if you can walk to the poll if you live.
Yeah, and it, also on Election Day on Tuesday, we had trans running from the UC to the rec center and back all day for handful of students who came out and had to go and vote on that day. But a huge majority, I'll be walking through campus mentioning, did you vote, did you vote, did you vote? And half of them would say, yeah, I voted the first day. So they are really engaged and they really, really appreciate that opportunity that's provided. And I am friends with numerous poll workers as well, so we appreciate that opportunity for students to have that, and feel income and share and do with their friends and kind of influence and say, hey, come on, do this, I'll be there. So we really, really appreciate that.
I just echo what the chairman said about Commissioners do care about students. And I know, I know there's a lot of folks sometimes that say things not too friendly towards the students and things like that, and I have that conversation with me.
Yes.
Oh, they're only here part-time, and the comment I make to them a lot, and it makes them think a little bit, is, well, that one student might be gone in four years, but there's another one right behind him replacing that.
Exactly.
So it's not, a given slot is a permanent resident of Jackson County.
Exactly, yes.
The other thing you might want to do is encourage as many of your classmates and other college students, what they really need to do to, you know, we have low property taxes in this county. If they register or declare this as a residence, we can get their vehicles on our tax rules. They can pay taxes here, so they could save their parents some money.
I see, there you go. So I'm working, working the system, yeah. Not a bad point.
People don't really need to pass that law.
See, I know, right there. Something to keep in mind, no doubt.
That's awesome.
You know, it's interesting to me though, we have two daughters that live in Hickory and met several of their friends who went to Western. And many of them mentioned to us, oh, we would love to come back. And so, you know, I think the fact that they came here to school, loved it, some of these people that are now buying property and coming back, had a wonderful experience here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, good.
My favorite part is bragging about this place being, I've lived here all my life. And, oh my gosh, talk to so many people and just, they talk about how much they love it, how much it's really like Jackson County in this area is, is an escape for them. That's why they chose Western. I mean, I'll do tours with people on campus and they just talk about how beautiful it is. And that just, it's awesome. So I just want to help continue the mission of our home, this is where we are and what we're doing and what we're proud of, and let y'all know that if, if and when there is anything that y'all need student input on, student literal bodies to do work, anything of the sort, please let us know. And there was a contact sheet that I was able to get to y'all. That is, that has my number and Mr. Spire, who is our student body vice president. And biggest thing, we are always active and responsive, so you're not going to get a flat email from us to, I know it's a small list, but I wanted to give you people who will respond and who will connect and be able to make things happen. So that's kind of all I've got material wise, but anyways, yeah. And again, another opportunity that I remember, Mr. Matt, you showed up to our Democracy Day, not this year, but last during that whole period, yes. So that's an opportunity that Western provides for candidates to come on campus and share and connect with students. We had that on the 30th, I believe, just about two, three weeks ago. And there were numerous people coming in, Joe Sanqueen was one of them, Mr. Green, who's running for the attorney, I believe. So that's also an awesome opportunity for y'all to come out and share and express with the students, so anyway.
Do you have any last questions?
Yeah.
Jack, share just a minute.
Okay.
About the student involvement with the legislature, state legislature, trying to get things for the university that maybe they don't understand well without students input.
Yeah, so that is more centralized around the Association of Student Governments, as that's a larger organization. And we actually have a whole committee for government outreach within that organization who puts on advocacy days where we go out and touch base with legislators within the state and within our region to have those conversations about the needs of students. We actually have a couple going on this week, we had one last night at four o'clock, and then a couple today, like nine and 12, with different campuses based on their region and their representatives. And one of the biggest things that we're pushing for right now for just students in general is mental health. That's a, that's a huge thing we're facing right now. Just the sheer initiative to hop on a Zoom call and sit there and stare at a screen for hours on end to learn, and that's, that's a lot of stress on students. So that's just kind of one big thing that we're trying to face and tackle and having those conversations all across the state, because it's not just Western, it's not just Chapel Hill, it's not just Wilmington, it's the whole deal. And shoot, you could even zoom out further and realize that that's a national thing for colleges right now. So, yeah, but that's one of the ways that we're connecting and working, so, yeah. Goodness, thank y'all for your time, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
If y'all need anything, let me know, let us know, we'd love to help and connect and do, so, yeah.
Well, and I just want to say one last thing. I appreciate so much your involvement and other students, because you're the future. I'm 68 years old, there's people that were going to be moving on, and y'all are the ones that are going to step up, so thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Thank y'all, and I will share what y'all mentioned and let them know that there's an awesome Board of Commissioners and people from the, all of y'all, taking care of us and making everything fall into place, so we appreciate it. Anything, let us know.
Thank you, sir.
You have my time, thank you, yeah. No doubt.
Item 2?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey.
Yes, sir. So what you have in front of you, the under number, excuse me, under item number 2A, you see detention center position transfer. I was approached by the sheriff in regards to, he currently has a vacancy in his lieutenant position for his jail. And currently right now, that position is not a certified law enforcement officer. He does have a current certified law enforcement officer that's, that actually operates out of the sheriff's department's budget versus the jail board's budget that's interested in that position. What he's wanting to do is he's wanting to allow for this officer to keep, to maintain their certification, their law enforcement officer certification, and, and then he's also want to transfer this person to be lieutenant of the jail. So in order to incentivize him to do that, and to keep this position, he's really trying to put this position in line with other certified lieutenants, which is a grade 52. So you see in the sheriff's budget, at grade 52, you can see you got the civil process lieutenant, detective lieutenant, and patrol lieutenant, and they're all certified officers. So what he's looking to do is transfer the jail lieutenant position under, to his sheriff's department budget and turn that into a detention lieutenant with ELEO certification. And what this allows him to do is to have someone that's lieutenant in the jail, but if he needs to call them out into the field, if he's doing a massive roadblock or things of that nature, he has someone with arrest power that he also can use as a law enforcement officer. Currently, just so you know, the captain of the jail is being paid for out of the sheriff's office budget because the captain of the jail is also a certified law enforcement officer. And so what he's looking to do, again, is he has someone he wishes to put in that position, and he wishes for them to maintain their, their law enforcement certification. The other point to this too is, is that law enforcement officers have access to a second, like with retirement. And so there's no way this person would move out of that certified law enforcement position into a lieutenant jail position without maintaining their retirement. So this also allows this person, this position, to maintain their retirement, otherwise they would lose. Basically, they would not take the position because they'd be given that retirement. So this does align with, with what he's done with his other lieutenants. It aligns with what's being done with the jail captain. And at the end of the day, I do believe there's value of maintaining their law enforcement officer certification. So in essence, what we're doing is transferring that position from the jail to the sheriff. It would move it from a grade 50 to a grade 52.
Questions about what's been requested? Hearing no questions, is there consent, go ahead, Mr. Woody?
I was trying to think through this, but the person that they want to move into this is currently an SH52.
No. This, the current person is, do you know what? It's a, it's a patrol, what's that grade? 47, 48? 48. No, this person is currently a patrol.
Okay.
So.
But they're under that system that allows, okay.
They're a certified law enforcement officer, which they're under a couple different retirement systems.
I see.
Being a certified law enforcement officer.
Okay.
To me, that's the bonus of it, the justification for me and why I recommend it to the board to proceed forward with this, is what it does is it maintains an additional person who is certified as a law enforcement officer. There's a lot of value for the sheriff to have more people with this certification to call when there are events in which they take place in our community. A simple way to put it, these people have arrest power, okay, the certified law enforcement officer. A jailer does not have, he cannot send a jailer out with the same authority that he can with a certified law enforcement officer.
So it allows for flexibility.
Allows for flexibility, and it allows for this position not only to be a lieutenant in jail, but in times of emergency, this position could be called out in the community and still perform what we all consider standard law enforcement duties, including up to the arrest power.
Other questions? So we would put this on the agenda and then we would just be reclassifying that position to this new grade.
Correct, and it would be a detention, it would be a detention lieutenant with ELEO certification.
Okay. Is the consensus? False?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll put it on the agenda then. Next item?
Yes, sir, next item is in regards to, we do have Mr. McKenna and Dr. Timpson here from the, from the school system. We did open up bids for the Blue Ridge School certified bids. And what you should have included in the packets, and I pull it up on the screen here, is just a reminder of what the schedule is for this project. We did open up bids, November 5th, I did receive the bid tabulation on November 6th, and we are looking to move forward with this project. I was hoping to do it today, obviously that wasn't brought up. Now we're looking to have this project voted on November 17th. And we believe that we're able to move forward on November 17th that we can still meet these other portions of the timeline itself. So what I've also included in your packets is the bid tabulation. And you can see the bid tabulation from the engineer, Mr. Loftus. And you can see the low bidder is Stillwell Enterprises. See it's broken down into water system at $480,000, the wastewater system at $800,000 for total project cost. This is construction cost of $1,280,000. Just a reminder to the board, the grant that the county received was a million dollar grant. Just a reminder to the board, the grant that the county received was a million dollar grant. A million dollar grant. And I'll, I'll hold off. We have sheriff just walking in if anyone. Okay, sheriff.
Hey.
Hey. We just, we, we've gone past number one, our first member of that team. Hey, sir.
Okay.
We didn't vote it down.
No. My apologies, please. Had a lot going on. We've been on two eighty-one most of the morning. We need to keep this getting back. Got too many irons in the fire today. We appreciate it. So we're good.
Any, any other questions while the sheriff's here? Chief empty? We, we talked about it and Mr. Adams explained it and we'd give it the thumbs up to go ahead and place it on the next attendant.
Okay. We won't beat you. Hey, thank you. Appreciate you.
So just a reminder to the board that the CDBG grant amount was in the amount of a million dollars. And so that million dollars not only covers construction costs, but it covers engineering costs, contingency, all of the above. So as you can see, we would be short two hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus all the other additional expenses. I'll get to that in just one second. The next item that I have is we do have a letter from Mr. Loftus. And Mr. Loftus is recommending. Mr. Loftus is recommending that we proceed forward with this low bid. I can tell you too, I did speak to Julie Covetta with CDBG and she is familiar with Stillwell. She is familiar with the, the ownership and, and she was pleased that, a lot of times you may get bidders who are not familiar with the CDBG program. And that sometimes makes it difficult. So she was pleased that, that the low bidder was somebody that they believe has capacities to operate a CDBG program. Of course, just a Loftus recommends that we move forward contingent upon three things. Funding is available to proceed. That the North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure Fund's adoption of the patient submitted through the, with the Stillwell Enterprise bid is acceptable. Again, that's the reason I was mentioning that they know Stillwell, they know that they understand CDBG. And if the award of the contract meets the recommendations of the owner attorney, Ms. Baker has read through the tax contract. And I believe everything is good with Ms. Baker with the tax contract. So I did call, I did call Ms. Covetta at CDBG and Ms. Covetta has, she is proceeding forward to try to allocate an additional two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. Towards this program. That's basically the rest of the money in their, in their account. And so I have already submitted a letter to them. I did it last Friday. She's hoping by the end of this week that we will get approval from Department of Commerce to transfer the rest of these funds into this program. And if the rest of these funds get transferred in this program, we will be basically still short a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. And that, that would basically help cover our engineering fees, our contingency fees. That's a five percent contingency. And basically that's, that's the total cost. So where we're at right now, we do have funds available in the quarter cent sales tax. And I did, I did have some conversations with Mr. Buchanan about this that we agreed that in order for them to move forward, it'd be appropriate to move a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars out of the quarter cent sales tax fund into this fund. And so in essence, if we move forward with this, I think we're fortunate to basically have, to basically have a, a project that cost around one point four million dollars. One point four seven million dollars paid for all of it, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And I think that is a positive. And so the reason I wasn't able to move forward and ask for this board's approval tonight is, is a couple of things that need to happen. I've also included in your packets the contract that, that I would request that the board vote on. So what I'm waiting for is from approval from the CDBG that they've moved the two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars into this program for us. What I've requested Ms. Fox to do is bring back to you the next meeting, a budget amendment that basically includes two things. One, the additional, excuse me, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, two eighty-eight, seven oh seven from CDBG. And also the budget amendment would include moving a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two ninety-three from the quarter cent sales tax. So that we have enough funds in this project to proceed forward. That would then enable you as a board to basically, first you would need to vote on that, that project budget amendment. And when the funds are in place, that would enable you to award the contract and then vote to allow the chairman to execute the contract that you see the action.
Do we have any reason believe that that can't, that could be possibly on the next agenda?
Well, we, we, that's probably needed on the next agenda. See, Julie has made as fast as she can. That's the reason we, she, she actually submitted it over to commerce probably about three o'clock, four o'clock on Friday. And hopefully we'll have everything in place for them to vote on Tuesday. We need that. We need that vote because when you go back to this schedule, all of these timelines are really dictated by CDBG requirements. And we're really looking to try to get that, that pre-construction and notice to proceed going by December eleventh so that we can meet this deadline of June fifteenth.
Okay. Any questions about the timeline or the changes that have come about since our last meeting that Dawn's highlighted? Okay. All right. Well, we'll hopefully keep our fingers crossed that that change, all that will come in by the next meeting. Next item is C Animal Rescue Center Green Energy Park Construction Contract.
So what you have enclosed in your package is the, the actual construction contract itself. This is something I'm requesting to put on the seventeenth agenda for the board to operate and the chairman to. I'm just really trying to get it in your hands. So if you have any questions, you can review it. It's been reviewed by legal. What I would request is still being reviewed by, by the contractor. We don't, this, this is basically the same document that was put into the bid spec. So we don't expect the contractor to come back with any, any changes because it's what they submitted their bid with. And so we would ask that the board, so to approve this contract and also allow any minor changes being appropriate by the chairman and the.
Any questions today for this contract? Take, take, take a look at it, especially over the next several days until we get to next week and.
I just had one question. Under the change order on the second page, it said COVID nineteen days, twenty-nine additional days. Is that money that we could utilize some of the COVID money we've gotten as accounting to compensate?
I think you're looking at the Community Service Center.
Change order.
Okay, so if this is what you're looking at, look under the screen. Yeah. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Second page of that.
That would be the next.
That's for the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I went to the wrong tab. Please forgive me.
So the, the contract, the one I have up here, I did not.
That's not in her pack.
That is not.
Play, I've looked, you must have got them. You can go online and look at them.
Yeah, okay.
It's two hundred and fifty-eight pages?
No, don't print it out. Please. Don't waste the paper.
It's, it's, the CDBG contract is two hundred and fifty-eight pages.
We didn't want it, but we'd like to not rule it out.
Yeah.
And then the animal rescue center, I'm sorry, the contract itself, also it's sixty-eight. If you want to copy the other, Andrew, if you have to print your copy.
No.
Please, sir.
Save the trees.
Yeah, please save. I can look online.
This, this is online and.
Yes.
Any preliminary comments about the contract? Like I said, I know it's a lot to read to go through, so. Unless we have some today, we make sure we have your questions ready for the next meeting.
It's pretty simple. I mean, again, page three, if you go to the first handful of pages, you'll see the contract sum, the alternates that were chosen. It goes through and talks about just the different, if you read the first three or four pages, a lot of this was really familiar because it's items that were discussed with the board before creating the contract.
I, I do have one question, just in light of our work with Mr. Poston as far as having site preparation ready. I, I know that was for multiple family units, but will we be doing that same thing as having site preparation ready before they start building up?
Uh, what we'll have is a. Not like you're being described that. We will have, we have an erosion control permit.
Okay.
That we will have.
That will be following it, yes.
The main thing I can tell you, the difference between this project and other projects is y'all have to write control over this project.
Well, I know that. But I just want to be, because we've held other people accountable, I want to make sure that we hold ourselves accountable as well. That's my question. So, thank you.
You have that direct ability. We, we do have an erosion control permit.
Yes.
It'd be issued. It'd be, the contractor will be responsible for following that. I've, I've already had, we've already had a preliminary phone conversation. And just so you know, I'm putting these issues on the contractor's radar, meaning I've already told the contractor there's been some issues in our community in regards to erosion control. We need to make sure that we stay with our grading contractor. We need to, to work with them and make sure that they follow everything. So we've already started these conversations.
That's good.
We have our pre-did conference and when we, at a pre, excuse me, pre-construction conference, when we're out there, I'll make sure that we have this conversation with the grading contractor. And yes, we'll, we'll be very conscious of these issues.
Thank you so much. And you know, it is near the river, so that is certainly, thank you.
Any other questions accompanying? All right, we'll move on to D, the Community Service Center.
So. Really want to do is just, just, I wanted to just follow up with this document itself and wanted to follow through with just providing updated information. You had this document presented to you before. And so really wanted to sit here and look and show you where our changes are. We did get a credit back, but there are some times we get credit back in regards to change orders. So that's new. That's the last one. I can tell you, I'm dealing with a change order right now. We have, I have Tony and Shelley from Co-Enforcement and from the Health Department. We've gone and reviewed the one-stop permit center and I'm looking right now about another twelve thousand dollar change order to move the countertop. What's happened in that, in that one-stop center? Now, I know you can look at it on drawings, but once you physically see it. I've had them request us change it because the lobby area is very large and where you have five individuals that will be sitting their entire career. Literally the wall is, you know, maybe from here to those seats. And then there's a large lobby area out. So I do have a change order basically just to move the, the countertops forward a little bit. And then what we can do is add some additional storage for the individuals. This will mean a lot. You know, you can imagine people who work there, this is their lives. This is where they will spend all day, every day. And so just by taking storage and adding things of that nature behind them, the countertop space. It's just things that I wish were found in design, but right now we, it'll be impossible to change this once we move in there. So we're dealing with those things that may add. Right now, you can see the eighty-two additional days, substantial completion date was twenty-seventh. It may add a couple of weeks to that, but obviously we'll have some things that we have to settle up with the contract packing in. Because right now we're obviously past that substantial completion date. So I can't tell you that, that there may be a need to add just a few more days to that. Otherwise, one of the things too I wanted to talk to the board about is changes on hold right here. This is something that I looked at very early because I found out, you know, the concrete that's there that they, around the top and around the windows of that building. If you've been over there, you see even after it's been pressure washed, it's stained. It looks stained. And so ultimately I had them priced up early into this process from a company called Noll Call. And what it is, is they're able to stain. It's not paint. It's a stain. It's designed to penetrate, go into block and brick and so forth. This is something that we're, we're heading up on winter time and I know that, that we may want to look at some other things at that building too. I, I'm going to recommend we just pull off on this right now. And then if we have something that we want to improve with looks at that building. We need to get this contract completed. Then we need to get people moved in and get it operated. And if there's things that we want to do outside of that building, and I know there's been some conversations about that, then let's plan on doing that. Let's have those conversations. And then in spring, if we want to improve the outside appearance, we need to bring this back into the conversation. The, the staining of the concrete and things of that nature along with if we want to do anything with the landscaping and things of that nature. And then spring would be the, we want to have the conversation before spring, but spring would be the time that we would start implementing on it. And right now, the furniture is slated to show up. Let me talk about, let me back up with it. Where we're at right now is what's called the punch list, the, the things to do list. I've now made it completed for both floors. We've split it up between two floors. The upstairs was done last week. The contractor was able to start on that sooner. Finished the, or the week before finished the punch for downstairs last week, Friday. Between now and November thirtieth, the contractor hopefully will get all what I would consider cosmetic things done. Try and create that, a true line between, before we start moving in and messing up the paint job and, and make sure they fix everything correctly. We do have the furniture showing up November thirtieth, which I do believe they'll have the, the things to do, the punch list mostly complete by then. Furniture will take between two to three weeks to put together, build out. That's going to put us right around the holiday season. And so right now we're tentatively, and it has not been set yet. I have to give between thirty days and six weeks notice to state IT to move those phone lines. So the internet and phone lines for the Health Department. So in the next couple of weeks, the call will be made. And the goal would be is to make the call the first or second week of January as far as a move-in date goes. What's really going to influence that a little bit is the timeline of when they can get the countertops as I described, moved forward and get all that done. So we're on the tail end and hopefully we'll be looking at the move-in date in January. And I can say, once we move in and get everything settled and operating, we can have a grand opening. And everybody in this room and everybody involved will absolutely be involved in that, that whole celebration.
Any questions for the manager about the schedule so far on the construction change order schedule? Okay, here are none. Next is our meeting schedule. Dawn and I have talked a little bit about our upcoming schedule. We still, the one variable we don't know the answer to yet is the timing on the, the organizational meeting. Which has to be held on December seventh. You know, obviously, Mr. Stribling, Tom Stribling is the commissioner-elect for District Three. And the winner of the District Four seat has not really been determined yet. There's a very small difference between Commissioner, former Commissioner Mark Jones and Mr. Mark Letson. And so Canvas Day will take place at the end of this week in which the final votes will be counted and the certification will take place. And then we'll know for sure who is going to be the, the winner of that race. So it's probably wise to wait until after that so we can know and then get an opportunity to sit down with both of those gentlemen, whomever they're going to be. And determine how we're going to move forward on the Monday, the seventh. So the question really comes down to, do we, we as a board, do we want to follow the normal schedule? And do we want to meet on Tuesday, December first? Do we want to meet on that day or would we rather? 1st? Do we want to meet on that day? Or would we rather meet prior to the organizational meeting on the 7th? As a final meeting of this board, in its current arrangement.
I don't, I have one comment. Is, are you, are you going to have everything done for the CPBG? Or do we want to keep the first schedule in case things don't go as planned? Because it'd be easier to cancel one, right, than to recall one? Are we going to be okay with that?
I think, if I need, I think you decide what you want to do. If we need to meet, then we can call at a 48-hour.
Okay. That was my only comment. Just thinking about that.
And I'd like to, I was hoping Commissioner Lueker could participate. I don't think he's joined us as of. Okay. I really would like for him to be able to be here if possible. I know we have plaques that we present to outgoing commissioners and give y'all a chance to speak and so.
I mean, we're competing. It's on the schedule. I guess it has to be set up today.
Yeah, listen, we can think about it. We don't have to decide today yet. But just think about it. Check your schedules. Let's talk about it. And we'll try to reach out to Mickey and see too, what his schedule looks like. And we'll, we'll make a choice here in the next, well, maybe next week, we can circle back around on the agenda and decide if that gets us a little bit closer, whether we're going to meet on the 1st or we're going to meet on the 7th, one of the two. But the organizational meeting will be on the 7th. And at this point, our thought has been is because of also the court issues with, you know, having trials here in this boardroom, to schedule that meeting for the old courthouse, for the library complex, and to take care of that meeting there off-site so that we're guaranteed the ability to have the space. And also, I think it works well for the, the new swearing-in ceremony to take place at the old courthouse.
So then, Tuesday, December 8th, that work session would not occur. Is that correct?
No, that would occur. That would be the.
Well, there is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, that's the board meeting, the 8th and 9th.
The 8th and the 9th?
Yes. By Zoom. They're by Zoom, but.
What time is that?
Oh, dear. I'm, I have it on my email. I did write down the time. But, well.
Well, check and see. And that's, that's something we can also talk about next week. We might need to move that one to the 10th that week. Maybe we can move it to Thursday. And then with our goal being the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, because, and some of y'all might want to participate as well, because that is the one way we adopt our legislative goals. So it's important.
Okay.
For, for votes at that meeting on the 8th.
So really, we don't have anything to decide today, but just have you to look at your calendars and, and we'll try to, on our next meeting, fine-tune and determine what dates and times. Other business? Do you have any other business, Dawn?
I don't, do we want to talk about the referendum?
We can.
I don't know, Jeff, I'm trying to find my.
Yeah.
I was waiting for this meeting. I had it put on the agenda, but I, I know there's been questions about what's the steps and so forth. Did that, before you?
If you would, just give us an update as to what the steps are.
So, of course, everybody knows that the bomb referendum for the indoor pool, at this point seems to have passed by approximately 500 votes, but it's not official until the election certification. So the first step is to have a certified election. Then the next step is to, so let me back up. There's been questions about whether or not is the board going to vote to, to do something, right? To move forward. Well, the, the real next steps are to bring a, what's called a resolution regarding the certification of election. That's just the bomb requirement. The next step would be a reimbursement resolution, meaning you as a board would vote on a reimbursement resolution, recognizing that there are going to be expenses coming up, that you eventually will reimburse yourself with the loan or the bonds. The next step after that would be potentially a budget amendment. The budget amendment would put funds in place to actually pay for an architect and also a bond council. The next steps after that would be to come up and vote on an architectural agreement and also a bond attorney agreement. And those are all the steps that would be necessary to proceed forward. And so those are the things, or examples that you require proceed forward. Ultimately, if you go into an architect contract, it generally takes eight months plus to do, to be ready for bidding. You know, let's just say eight months. It could be eight months or a year to get designed for bidding. In that meantime, once that got, once all of these things got voted upon to move forward, then what would happen is, is there would have to be some conversations about how we want to finance. Right now, the vote allows for bonds to be issued, which right now that does seem like the most efficient and effective way to proceed forward. But there would be, it'd be worth some conversations about, I mean, I did have a little bit more conversations about cops and so forth. It would be worth just having a conversation about not necessarily some of the purchase but, but it'd be about when and I can get better interest. But all that would need to be beside it, honestly, in the meantime, while you're going through a design period. You know, the architectural agreement for this type of, the reason you need to put the money in place for this type of project is, is going to be a seven-figure agreement. And so that's why you'd need a budget amendment, put the money in place in order to sign the contract. So really, that's the steps to move forward. And so from this board's perspective, if you're, if you're looking for direction of to give, it really is directing to go ahead and get an architect agreement, bond attorney agreement, and then the other resolutions before you. It can't happen, I don't know if I could get that done. I don't know how quick all that can be done, but really, that's, that's the next step.
Why don't you develop a timeline then to see what reality is? Realistically, we could accomplish any or all of that. Yeah.
I thought we already had architect and plans. I mean, it seemed what you presented to us was quite detailed.
We, now what we have done, the good news is, is we have gone through the request for qualifications. So we have an architect that I don't have to go through a bidding on.
Right.
The qualification process. But that architect does have to put together, you know, we paid what, $30,000, $100,000 for the architect. Well, this next contract is a seven-figure contract. We do have to go through.
Contract documents.
A contract. And so then the architect has to put together what's considered a construction design. So we've got, we've got a schematic design, but the next level of design is really getting down to designing the plumbing, the electrical.
The blueprints.
Okay. So we're not, what we presented to the public and what they voted on is what we're getting.
That's what we're getting.
Good.
It'll look like that.
I, okay, I'm, I misunderstood. I was thinking we were going to start. I thought, oh my.
Remember the animal shelter? We had some drawings way back when that were conceptual and all that. That's where we're at.
Okay.
So now we have to go out and get it.
To get the blueprints, the big blueprints that you'll have all the details, how to build it. That's what it's going to cost.
And that's what will take eight months more because that, that really gets into quite a bit of work.
Blueprints and drawings and engineering, both, like going and so forth. Yeah, at least a million dollars.
I'll take your round.
That's what you said.
Yeah. I mean, it takes construction around 14 to 15 million times seven to eight percent. It'll be up there.
Okay, thanks.
So a lot, a lot of work to be done.
Yes.
To get us to the position to be, do that work, so.
Yeah, nine eighty, four twenty.
Any other questions about the pool and that ongoing process?
Just one thing that, from, from this bond referendum, which did pass by around 500 votes and it, and it may change, you know, when it's certified. I, I would like us to work real hard to be transparent, not that we aren't, I think we are, but maybe take extra steps to be transparent in the process moving forward so that those who did not maybe vote for it will see that there could be some benefits for them. Because they're citizens of this community, they're going to be helping to pay for it, and that we make it a real positive thing going forward. And I know we try that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a good point. And you know, a lot of people may have voted, and I'm just speculating here, but it just, it points to what you're saying. A lot of people may have voted for it because they thought it cost too much.
Yes.
But they still liked the idea.
Yes.
Or some people may have voted for it, they, or voted against it because they didn't like the location, but they still liked the pool. So, I mean, there, there are people who probably possibly could have voted against it for different reasons. That doesn't mean that they're against the pool.
Right.
So they may use it still, so.
Sure.
Or voted against it because we're in this pandemic.
Exactly. So it's hard to say.
You start thinking about the timeline. Hope to God we're not still dealing with this.
Yes. Well, and I think some people thought, you know, with the cost and, and in relation to other needs in our community. But I think we can emphasize that this will meet some needs for health and recreation and ongoing things that, that will be very beneficial to all of us.
Any other comments or questions about the pool? All right. Anything else, Mr. Adams? Did you have, did you want to bring in? Mr. Matt, do you have anything today, extra?
Do not add.
Mr. Woody?
Um, I'd like to put something on our radar just for later because we can't really do this until things with COVID are resolved. But I am involved in a, a class with the UNC School of Government. And one of the things that two of the school board members, one from Orange County and another one from Wilmington, have said that they have had informal meetings. And since we have the school board people here, I thought I'd mention it. I was going to bring it up later. But they have had informal meetings jointly with the boards and had a meal together, not to talk about budget or issues, but just to communicate. And they were telling the class how beneficial that was for ongoing negotiations about budget and ongoing issues about building and, you know, just school things. So I just wanted to put that on our radar, that when the time comes that we can get together to hopefully schedule a meeting. And then I'd like to see us do that with the municipalities as well. Just an informal kind of opportunity to say, you know, these things matter. What do you think? Those kinds of things. So.
Okay.
Just for future. Would you all be favorable to that?
Absolutely. Give us the date and we'll be here.
Okay.
Yes.
Corn, cornbread.
I'll bring the corn.
Cornbread beans, we're, we're there.
Mr. Deeks, any?
I wonder if, I'd just like to suggest that we look at the Health Department about this new vaccine. It's just maybe make about the next few weeks.
Yes.
And reading about that and talking about it here and stuff today, there's going to be a huge expense in preparation just to receive that vaccine as far as the refrigeration and all that goes into that. And it, it may be that our Health Department's might have to expend, or we may have to spend some money there to have, just to have that vaccine here again. If we're going, if we, there is things we have to do. We need to be ahead of it rather than.
That's right.
Following.
That's good.
And, go ahead, sir.
Just follow up with Commissioner Deeks. So when we find out when the work sessions want to be, we, we had the Health Department scheduled a December 8 work session?
Yes.
Okay. So once we find out when that work session's going to be, then I'll call them back and try to get them on the work session. And I'll put that topic on there too.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you. Yeah.
And I don't have it ready today, but in the future meetings, I have had a conversation with the members of the NAACP. I know they have asked for a resolution and Silver Town Board, I believe, recently passed one. They're wanting to have erected a, one of those state historical markers that would tell the story of the Cowie Nine, I believe.
Yes.
That died down the tunnel on the Tucusiji River. So that is a process, an application that has to be filed with the State Historical Society. And they're working through, trying to get that application completed, to submit to the state. And they were hoping to have some supporting resolutions from the local governments here in Jackson County, town and municipal and county government to help support their effort to put that historical monument to be added. You know, the state has a list of those all over the state.
Yes.
So I do have that resolution. And unfortunately, I could not get it here today to get on the agenda, but I'll also try to get that sent to everybody.
Turn it up data on with the EDCI and maybe the Jerry Wolf.
Mr. Woody?
It's all, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Christian Woody might have more of an update.
Yes. Everything's done. We are just waiting for them to make the signs. It's in DOT's hands now. There, once they make the signs, then they will determine the day that they will be erected within the timeframe they'll erect them. And then we can have, and, and I've been in touch with Banji Stevens, Dr. Jerry Wolf's daughter, and they're hoping it will be after COVID, just so that we could have the celebration and get together. Because they have an extended family and of course want tribal people as well. So, but it is all done. Yes, moving ahead. Thank you.
Any other topics? Have a motion to adjourn?
Still moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've had a meeting sometimes with the students. Formal, like a meal thing. Once, once we can get together.
We've done that in the past.
Have you?
Yeah. Yep, we've done it. It's a good thing.
It's too late now, but at least you could.
Oh, I think you're the better bet.
Alex, it's not a lot.
It works about this booth.
It didn't apply a length line, but.
Well, I mean, they were.
All right. Is it okay?
I don't understand. I don't feel. I said, these people, and look, the problem is we're in bind. We can't say.
I mean, there's.
I mean, they wouldn't let us. There's just no way around it.
Yeah, y'all just followed me. So I just wanted to make sure it's all right if I call back in a bit. Is that it?
Wow.
Thanks, y'all.
That is a pretty.
I love these rolls. That's my favorite.
Oh, I, my favorite right now.